Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lemister School Committee Monday, June 18th to order. And if everyone can please stand and say their pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. I'm going to read our statement and then we'll open the public forum. The committee represents the needs of all Lemister Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocol, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemister. Okay, would anybody like to address the committee during the open forum? Please step forward to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Nelsworthy and I live at 95 Smith Street. I'm here in support of the school committee's budget for the upcoming school year. I'm in support of the Medicaid funds being used to reimburse the classrooms where the reimbursable services were provided in the first place. Just because there is no law that demands that Medicaid funding should be put back from where it came does not mean that our city should not choose to do the right thing on its merits for the benefit of our children and the educators. Although the law only requires the busing up to grade six, I implore the school committee not to take away transportation from the high school students. As someone who has worked in many different spheres of social services and as an advocate for social equity, I can tell you that whether you're talking about healthcare, mental health, after-school services, or anything else, lack of transportation creates lack of access and inequity. If children cannot access school, they might be more inclined to quit at 16 if they can't solve the transportation issue. This doesn't benefit the child, their family, or our community. If they can't access school and accrue excessive absences, the school can actually call DCF on them for not sending them to school. What if they don't have a car or can't drive? Where's the equity? As a taxpayer and as an advocate for our schools, I would much rather see a greater percentage of funding go to the schools than to transportation and have a slightly lower bond rating, which will be equalized by the investment in our children, our educators, and our community. I would also like to advocate for a more equitable distribution of grant funding so that children can access the same level of technology and the same quality of field trips regardless of which school they attend. We live in difficult times and it's times like these we need to cling to our values and ensure the next generation's future is secure in our community. I'll leave you with a Frederick Douglass quote, "It is easier to build strong children than to repair broken men." Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? One final and last time, would anybody like to address the committee? If not, we will close this portion and move on to communications. There are no communications this evening? Great, can we move right into the superintendent's report then, please?
Sure. Good evening. If it isn't snow, it's heat and a possible tornado. But thank you for not asking me to close the schools because it was not going to happen. First, as most of you know, this is the last week of school with a half-day dismissal on Friday. Please know that breakfast and lunch will be served each day. It's a busy time and students are in the midst of taking finals, finishing up projects, participating in athletics, and scheduling for next year. Very intense. So throughout this week, step-up events or transitions are occurring at every level. Kindergarten classes are visiting the elementary buildings. You have to see their faces. They're so excited with big kids. Grade five students are excitedly scoping out their middle schools. And eighth-grade students are enthusiastic about their next phase as high schoolers. All levels are eager to start the FY19 year on solid ground. With that being said, our district has a few cleanup items that we need our families' attention. Please check your child's backpacks, bedrooms, cars, for any library or textbooks. All materials need to be returned as soon as possible so staff may catalog and/or reorder materials so we have appropriate supplies for next year. Also, lunch accounts need to be balanced out. If you have a negative balance right now, and Mr. Burr is here this evening, so he's here to answer questions, please don't hesitate to contact your school cafeteria manager. It's essential to clean up accounts so we may move forward. Last, as this is our final school committee meeting for the FY18 school year, I want to thank everyone not only for their support and guidance, but their patience. As a district, we faced some obstacles that could not be predicted. Together, we got through it successfully and in full view. I am more than hopeful in the growth of our district as we embrace a new fiscal year and will continue to be a champion for staff and students. I want you to enjoy your summer, take trips, celebrate moments, attend events, read a lot, and overall, have fun and just rest up for FY19. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we're going to move on to the Chartwell presentation. If you could come on up. And before you begin, we can thank you very much for our smoothies. They're delicious. And our cookies. So we always love it when you come to visit us because you bring goodies. So thank you.
Well, that's a good thing. Hi, my name is Bob. I'm the food service director of Lemister Public Schools. And with me tonight is Michelle Paladino, new dietitian that just came aboard this year. And tonight, I'm going to present the 2017-2018 financial review. You should all have it in your packet. If not, I have some extra copy up here if you'd like.
Do you want to end the first presentation, Sean?
Okay, first of all, like I said, let me jump right into slide three on this presentation. It talks about the program, investments, some grants we got this year, and a little bit about our participation that we had this year. This year, some of our program investments, we actually got a new high school dishwasher. We never had a dishwasher up at the high school, so we got that all hooked up and purchased this year and installed. And, you know, we have a savings of about, it's going to be about $5,000 per year on this, you know, cutting back on labor and things like that. So that's why we also invested in that as well. We also did a few high school renovations this year. We put in two hot and cold wells in the units up at the high school. We felt that the safety was a little problem with temperatures with the current units that we had, so we purchased these ones to get our hot food hotter and our cold food colder. So that was more of a safety thing, so we invested in that this year as well. And with that, we also invested in these guys, more heat lamps, stuff with a little more power to keep the food hot in some tray levels as well, all at the high school. Of course, you know about some of these grants that we got when we presented earlier this year. We had the Fuel Up Grant, which totaled $16,105. We just got a couple recent, excuse me, recent grants, a couple of grants, an equipment grant of $6,600, and we're going to be purchasing a new oven at Northwest. And we also have a grant at Francis Drake for $500 for the Eos Foundation as well. So total grants for this year for our department is a little over $23,000 for grants this year. I also wanted to bring up participation district-wide. Lunches are at an all-time high since we've been here. We've been here about nine years now, going into our 10th year that's coming up, and we're at 66% at lunch. This is through May district-wide. It will drop because June, we have a lot of field trips and, you know, people going out. And so it might drop down to 65, 64, but still, that's pretty much an all-time high for us. And when we started, you know, years ago, nine years ago, we came into, it was about 53%. Breakfast also went up at 28%. And breakfast nine, 10 years ago was about 12%. So it's quite the increase as well, and that has a lot to do with breakfast and the processing programs that we implemented. And, you know, we've got the universal program as well, and that is also helpful with that. Okay, going to the next page is actually the year-to-date financials, the review for the, and these are all, these are estimates. They were solid through May, and I just took some estimates and just added them to June where we're about to be. And I will have the final numbers probably around July 10th where we're going to be. And as you see, if you go down the list here, it's all year-to-date meals, a little over 900,000. You know, brings us, our average daily meal served throughout the district, it's over 5,000, just under 5,100. Cash revenues, we have our cash line sales, and our reimbursements, which equal out to our total revenue down the bottom there, and our average daily sales as well. And below that is all our expenses. Expenses, you know, the food, the national volume discounts that we get for being a large company and having the purchasing power, we get rebates back, and those numbers come off our total food costs as well and gives us a net product cost. You know, then we obviously have, we have our labor, our expenses, management fees, admin fees, and direct expenses as well. Below is a total expense line. Subtract that by the revenue, and we're returning to the food service program about 195K estimated this year. I also compared it against our revolving account as well in Munis. And, you know, contractually, what we're responsible for is a little different than what's actually goes through the Munis report. We don't, any kind of equipment repairs, we're not responsible for in purchases, certain equipment purchases. So I tallied those up the end of May, and that came out to about 105K. So we take the 105K off, the 195 brings us down to about 90 that we're returning to the program total this year. So that's good news. Another thing about good news is that the state requires to have a net operating cost of three months' expenses, and that's about $275,000 a month, the cost of surrounding operation. So if you add three months there, it's about 180, excuse me, 825K. We are closing in on that number. So we do have to start looking into spending this money into the food service account. And, you know, I've got a couple of different ideas. I would like to walk around maybe the facilities and the business manager and go through some things that, you know, we need, you know, maybe some new equipment here and there, updated things. But we really probably should start thinking about spending this money down because, like I said, we are closing in on that number. So it's just my recommendation, so.
Do you have a priority list?
We had one over the years. We usually put one together right around the end of June, beginning of July, and I'll present that to superintendent as well. And we kind of have a pecking order of how we would like to maybe spend that money down. Okay. And the next page, actually, it's a handout. For me, it's a page. It might say Lemister Public Schools Prepaid Account Summary Report. This is to piggyback on what Superintendent Deacon said about the negative balances. And if you see, I highlighted each one. We're currently a little over $9,000 for negative balances. And by the law, this money has to be paid back into the school food service account through a general fund. So each year, I have to bill out that money to the business office, and they cut a check to put back into the revolving account. It's not something I want to do, but it's something that we have to do. So each year, we just try to get this number as low as possible. And like I said, this year is a little over $9,000, but with Superintendent Deacon this year and, you know, what's going on at the high school, they're doing a tremendous job of knocking the high school number down. That number's usually around $5,000 a year, and right now, it's currently at, you know, 3,600. So they are doing different things. Phone blasts that superintendent is sending out is helping, but, you know, the number's still a solid, you know, $9,000. And over the, you know, the past five years, they spent close to $60,000 in just payback in this money. So we do have a procedure that we have, and that might be something we need to look into a little more detail about, you know, what we do for negative balances and things like that. So, you know, maybe in the next couple of months, we can look at something like that as well. At least try to knock these numbers down moving forward into next year. And that's about it for me, but I'm sure there's some questions, anybody?
Could any students? Sure. So Bob, the negative number, that can come out of our revolving account, correct?
That can't come out of, not out of the school revolving account. It has to be paid for a general fund account back into the food service because.
And that's generated from?
I usually send the bill off to the business, yeah, business office and they cut a check.
Now, could some of this be related to the malware issue when the POS was down?
No, no. We keep track of this all year long, and that did hurt, but we got caught up with that. I mean, we had to, and we were real good, especially here at the high school with Assistant Principal Steve did a great job of helping us controlling this at the high school. So we thought we were pretty good, and we had a pretty good plan grabbing, you know, being accurate as far as that goes. But no, this number's been pretty solid. I mean, the last couple of years, it's been 9,000, 10,000, 14, 13, you know, write down the list. But, you know, the last couple of years, it's been knocked down to that $9,000 range. You know, the other thing too is if we get that CEP that, you know, we've been talking about, some unofficially, that'll help too as well because that knocks off the balances of all the elementary schools. So, you know, that would be a big help as well, so.
And so is this because some students haven't been paying their bill? Is that what it is?
Yes, yeah, the negative balances.
The negative balances, meaning that kids have charged and not?
Yeah, they get a $30 cap. They have a $30 cap, and they can use that charging breakfast or charging lunches. And once they hit that cap, you know, they get the alternate meal. It's still a small charge with the alternate meal, but, you know, we're constantly, it's a lot of work, and we're constantly chasing money around. We have a good plan, sending letters out, sending emails out, making phone calls, you know, so we have been getting a lot better doing, you know, what we're doing over the past couple of years, so.
And these are students who don't qualify for the free and reduced lunch?
That's correct.
So we're looking at that.
Yes, that's something we always, when we make the phone calls, we said, you know, we can send you an application, you can fill it out, you know, just fill it out because if you qualify, you qualify, you know, but it's worth a try, you know, but yes.
How many students do you have?
Well, I don't have that number up here, but I can actually look the actual number up to see, you know, what the actual negative number of students we have. But I don't have it off the top of my head.
I know you were saying that, you know, the past years, the numbers have gone up and down.
Yeah.
I'm just asking, if we could have a graph to show us, you know, like this 2018 growth from this growth, or the negative today as compared to last year and the year before.
Well, I did write those down. I don't have a chart, but like this year's 90,000, last year 92, year before that 10, 2, 14, 3, and 13, 1.
And that was at?
So we're moving in the right direction?
Yeah, we, you're correct. We are moving in the right direction. Like I said, it's just a matter of, you know, everybody kind of helping out, you know, and that makes a big difference. Principals get involved as well when they have to, but we really don't want to, everybody's got their thing to do, but, you know, we try, so it's, yes.
On the opposite side?
Yeah.
Are there students that have money left over in their account?
Yeah.
And what happens to them? Does that carry over to the next year?
Yes, no, that all carries over. That all carries over. When we work with our NutriKid system, that all carries over.
And that carries over from somebody going from middle school to high school?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
They take their number, so they take that?
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just want to make sure because I had, I had been questioned about that from a parent.
And what I do too is I print everybody's balance up at the end of the year and just put it in a little file cabinet, just in case there's a discrepancy. But it always carries over to the next year, yes.
The other question I have is, do kids pay cash for their lunches?
Some do.
Or it's all during, on their card?
Some do. We have a third party that we work with called My School Bucks that they can actually upload money online, and it goes right into our system.
But a child can come in with cash?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And buy some?
Yeah.
Because I was asked about somebody who was on free and reduced lunch, if they were, if they wanted to buy?
Like an Alacard?
Extra, extra that they could pay cash for that.
Yeah, and they can put money on their account as well. If they have $10, they want to put $10 in the account, that way, that's money in the bank for them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wendy? You mentioned that when you make the phone calls, you ask if they had applied for free and reduced lunch.
Yes.
If you have a family who didn't, and so filled out the application, and then is now eligible but didn't know before, does that change their balance?
That's a great question. We, they are responsible for the balance. They're responsible for the balance, but we work with them. You know, if it's something, you know, if they can only give a few dollars each week, we'll take that. But we do work with everybody, and it's kind of different case situations and things like that. That's why we try to get everybody to fill them out, you know, in the packets at the beginning of the year. It's so important.
So if you don't, the best bet for families listening then is to fill it out over the summer or when you get your packet?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because if you fill it out partway through the year and you're free or reduced, you could have been free or reduced so long.
Absolutely, yes.
And now you still have your balance.
Exactly. And they can fill it out anytime during the year. So if status changes at home, you know, they can fill it out September 1st, December 1st. It doesn't matter. They can pick it up June 18th if they wanted to and fill it out. They can fill it out at any time during the year. There's no cutoff date or anything, so.
And I know that the parent information center has the applications all the time. Are they also in the school offices all the time?
No, the applications have to be, a new application each year. And we, once we get the new application sent to us, then every family has to apply again. They have to fill out a new application every year.
Right. So you said about people who didn't apply, like at the beginning of the year, they can apply during the year. But I was just clarifying where the applications are found.
The applications are at the parent information.
Do the schools have them too? Like in the offices?
They're on the website as well. So we can print those up. That might be a great idea.
They get to get them filled out, and then once they come to the parent center, it's an automatic, put it in, they can tell a contributor what the status is. That's a nice thing. They find out by the way.
Right.
So those letters go out, there's all of these, at the beginning of the year, 6,000 letters that go out to parents, and then, so to please, go and help them get in. The other thing we've got is anonymous donors to the foundation wanting to help support some negative balances, and we have been able to do that with some families. So that has been very helpful. Those are anonymous donations, and it helps us with that. And then the other recommendation is the amount of meals that they are allowed to charge. It's been historically capped, and that's, or it is, but I, I mean, the recommendation would be to maybe that maybe have that capped by, to let my hope.
And what is the alternate meal then?
The alternate meal would be a sunburner and jelly sandwich or cheese sandwich along with all the fruits and vegetables that they want, along with a milk too. And just to piggyback on what Gina had said, I think when we got here, you know, nine, 10 years ago, it was 10 meals. There was a different accounting system back then. There was a different POS system. Didn't have the capability of what we have now, you know, to email and to get this information out, to get letters out. We had to handwrite a lot of that stuff when we first got here. And we switched over to the NutriKid system, and that made it a lot better to actually, to reach out to the parents that, you know, needed to be reached out to. So, you know, that's something to also keep into consideration as well. But we can definitely sit down and talk about that. I think we can be a wise thing to do as well.
So I think at our last school committee meeting, Superintendent Deacon had informed us that due to our free and reduced numbers, all students K through five would receive free breakfast and lunch across the district.
Yeah, that's in the CEP program. If we're applying for it, and we're probably going to hear in a couple of weeks in July, and we have the numbers that we need to be financially okay to break where we need to break and not, you know, jeopardize the program at all. So we do, we reached those numbers this year. We have it in the past. We did reach those numbers. Waterloo Bay, I think the PIC has done a great job of capturing the little milks and creamies of everything and capturing that, you know, one or two here and there because those just add up to us. And like I said, we've never had this opportunity to take advantage of this program, so.
So that would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
And we'll be able to, and that should hope impact our negative line?
Absolutely would.
Because it'll take out a whole, like, a third of our population?
Absolutely would.
That would be awesome. Just a question, I thought that was K through eight?
No, K through five.
K through five, elementary.
And that says something about demographics of what our, what our district represents.
And we're not, they said last time that we're very close to making it for the entire, right? She was telling us?
Yes, it's a lot of, it's detailed work. Every single application makes a difference. And sell its content, follow up with the families, and reach out to families, and then of course, the addresses that we get registered next year, those new ones that come back, we have to get them to the families. So, yes, we are, I mean, it's a daily chore to make sure we're up to date on all of that. And that the systems are working together to NutriKids. So, but yes, it possibly, I mean, we can see it district-wide, but right now, the upper grades are not doing that. And it's maybe some, just a question of fill out the applications because we may qualify and we don't know if we qualify. That's the thing, fill it, just fill out the application.
So for any families out there listening, please fill out those free and reduced lunch forms because that greatly impacts our ability to provide for all of our students, and everyone will benefit if everyone can have free breakfast and lunch. That would be awesome. All right, any other questions? Thank you so much, Bob, for doing this.
Thank you.
And then?
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to move on to the CTEI Evening Course Proposal. So Dave, if you'd like to come forward and, you might want to bring another chair up. You okay? You okay? Do you need a water?
She's choking on.
Do you want a smoothie? A beer?
Oh. That's fine.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us before you tonight. I believe that you received some information in your packets about the proposal that we want to put before you for approval tonight. Just to sum up a little bit, you may or may not know that we received a grant in the last year for our machine technology program. And it has taken us all year to go through that grant, get the new equipment in, take the old equipment out, de-energize the old equipment, energize the new equipment, and it's been a great process. Our students have learned a lot from it, and we're ready to embark in a new era. So we created this proposal because this was part of the grant when we wrote it. We wanted to begin doing some training at night for workers that are already in the machine or manufacturing industry, but were never trained in CNC machining when they went to school or they were in the trade. So now that we have the equipment in place, we would like to begin training workers that don't have this training under their belt already. So we work closely with the Workforce Development Board, and we work closely with our instructors and the providers of our CNC equipment. And you can see this Haas CNC Machining Level One proposal that we put in your packet. And I want to make it clear that we have two brands of CNC machines in our program now. The one of them is Haas, and this is the equipment that our teachers have had the most experience on. And with the recent grant that we received, we ended up investing in ProtoTrak, which is a little bit different CNC machining. And the teachers are anxious to get their professional development. They're going to be getting some training this summer, and they don't feel comfortable offering a program in ProtoTrak yet. They want to stick with the Haas to begin with. So you can see the proposal. So you can see the proposal that they put together. It would be a night school that would take place two nights a week, two hours per night, 16 hours total for the program. And we decided that we would like to charge a tuition that was, that would make people want to come. And so that's what we did, because this is the first time we're doing this, and we want to ensure that we get enough students to step forward to take part in the program. We would like to get eight students. We have four HOS machines, CNC milling machines. We can put two at each machine, and they can learn comfortably at those machines along with the instructor. You have all the information before you here. You can see the start date that we want to begin on and the possible end date when we would end. And also in your packet, we made a copy of this. This is the kind of packets that we get from ProtoTrak. And these are very good because when companies want to know, what are our workers going to learn? We can show them these packets, and they can see the type of skills that they will develop. And we use this as a sample to develop our own packet on the HOS equipment. So that's where we're at.
I think this is very exciting, and I really am thrilled that we're moving in this direction. And ideally, down the road, I'd like to see us offer more adult ed classes at night. We've got a wonderful facility here. There's no reason why we can't extend the usage to community members who can then, you know, benefit their own skills and, you know, supplement the workforce for us. So that's awesome. Questions known, and then Ron, and then Wendy?
Curious, Dave, do you still offer the plumbing course? Or let, I don't know who it was that was running the plumbing course, for people who wanted to go from journeyman to master plumbing? Do you still offer that, or?
We wish we did.
Yeah, you used to, right?
We used to, yes.
Yeah.
We're going to try to get that back. The teachers in our plumbing department have been working on night schooling for themselves to complete their professional licensure. And they also have taught this course in other schools. So we're in the process of trying to organize the plumbing program to come back as well.
That'd be great. My husband took it years ago.
Ron?
The, it's both the HOS and the ProtoTrak, the ProtoTrak. Now, after they finish, I, after they finish, they'll have a certificate, right? Will they have a certificate?
Well, we're working on that, Ron.
And what, I guess, oh, I guess you're reading my mind. They have a certificate. What can they build on with that certificate? What happens? What's the roadmap?
Well, I think basically what we want to do is we want to let the prospective students know what the competencies are that they will learn if they come to the program. And so CNC machining and programming level one is very basic in nature, but a lot of that information is not known to some of the workers and the general public right now because it's so new. And so that's all explained in the packet as to the kinds of skills that they will learn. There is no official certificate yet that we have put together.
Wendy? Do you have any people expressing interest already that you're hopeful that you could fill the class?
Yes, when we told Tim Sappington about this from the National Work, the Workforce Development Board, he was very excited, and he wants a flyer so that he can begin distributing it to the local industries and gather some support for this.
So you're confident you can...
We hope we can fill it, yes.
Or at least enough to run it for this, for this soon at the start of... Would you be running more than one cycle if there's, if you had enough students? Or would there be a level two?
Well, the intention right now, it may change, is to run level one in HOS by the time we get to the spring of 2019, that we would have enough ability to teach the ProtoTrak level one.
Okay.
And then we would have two level one groups, and perhaps the following year go up to level two.
Okay. Any other...
Can I just add one comment? So as the lead elected official on the workforce development, this is sort of some of the things that we've been working towards. But just to answer, Ron had a good question in talking about what does that certification get you? It's less about the certification and more about the ability to be able to run the machine. So for instance, IMA that was in the old Mary's building, so every single piece of every machine they make has to be machined. There are no pots for those anyway. So you can't go to any supply company in the United States and say, I need the pots for this. So what they do is they make the machines that bottle your little prescriptions, that bottle your vitamins, that now they're into the, what they call the dairy end of it. And the dairy end of it would be these little packets now. You can get tuna fish in them, you can get yogurt in them, these little sort of packs that, I don't know, they put everything in them today. I don't, I think about tuna fish eating out of a pack, so I guess it's, I don't know. Anyway, so every...
They love those.
So those are machines, right, they do. And they're popular. I know. And we love them too because the machines are made here. So each part of that machine has to be fabricated with a CNC machine. So where, the old days where you'd go in the Vanamole or something where they have the tool and die guys with lathes, who are experts at what they did, and that's really what was a big driver of the CTE program, was the tool making program. But now it's resorted to technology. So just having the ability to complete a course, even if it's the basics, the understanding, you know, what a CNC machine can do, because it's used for everything today. It makes tea, it cuts up signs, it does everything, and it does it with precision. So it's less about, right now, about the certification and more about being trained on the machine so that you can go back and actually use that machine, because some companies might have six or seven of these machines, they don't have enough people to run it.
I was being selfish when I was asking the question.
You're going to take the course.
No, it's because certification, certification, certification. Everyone can laugh at me because I claim I'm selfish. But certification to me equals buku bakunui. How much money are you going to make with that?
Yeah, you make money.
That's what I want to know.
You're right.
The certification, where's, how does it translate? How much money are they going to make?
It's too marketable.
How marketable?
Well...
That's the question that I wanted to know. I mean, I'm selfish, I admit it.
If you're working a line, I mean, if you're working just a general laborer, and you can move up to this, this, understanding this technology, be able to run these machines, it's a significant increase. Everybody pays differently, so I can't tell you, you know, what each company pays, but if you can run a CNC machine, you're, Steve back there, Steve, you're pretty much on the good market end of, aren't you?
You can, you can bring twenty or thirty dollars.
Right. So not bad money.
Well, frankly, serious. So I had to ask. I had to ask dirty questions.
Great, thank you. Sue, do you have a motion?
Yes, can I make a motion to move forward with this evening appropriate?
Do I have a second? Okay, we have lots of seconds. Any other thoughts or comments?
I think it's great.
Sure.
I would think we want to open a separate revolving account for evening school funds.
Right. Can you say yes? So I just want to make sure that that's considered and put in place, right?
Yes, that part of the motion.
Well, no, no, we're in discussion right now, but I just wanted to mention that.
That makes sense to keep that clearly delineated as a night school income expense.
Yeah. Well, it's got to be, yeah, but it's considered an evening school program.
And would there...
Now, are we under different guidelines as a true evening school program? No?
I don't know if I understand your question.
I don't know, there are different guidelines as an evening, you know, a night, adult event.
When we, when we had the plumbing program...
Right.
It was put into the revolving account under the evening school program, in our revolving account.
Okay.
So I imagine we would just resurrect that.
Would there have to be a cap on this?
No. What do you mean?
Well, as he said, you know, the plumbing is not here anymore. And the money that was in for the plumbing, where did it go? I'm just asking.
Right.
So now you want to make another one revolving for this, as I ask, that owe me, does there have to have a cap? And will there be a, will there be a paper trail where the money is? Because right now, we're asking, where's the money that went for the plumbing thing? Did it go back into some, into the black hole of Calcutta?
Well, probably people here, but no.
Just asking, guys.
That's a good question. And when I was here before, and the money was coming in through the plumbing department, we used that money to help fund the school. If we needed supplies, we would get supplies out of the revolving account. We, whatever we needed it for, for the students, we would be, we made out purchase orders to use the money for that purpose, and that's how we used it.
I was just, I didn't know we had to have a cap on it.
Perfect, we got an answer.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other discussion? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed?
Jan wanted to make a...
I was just going to invite everybody to, you know, maybe in a couple of weeks, come in and see the new shop, the way it's all set up. They've got a lot of equipment in there, new equipment. You can see the CNC machines. You can see the machines equipped with ProtoTrak. It's pretty neat stuff. You'll enjoy it.
Great, that'd be wonderful. People subjugated.
We'll give you, we'll give you an invite.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
So we're going to move on to your entry plan? Entry plan conclusion? Conclusions? Conclusions.
You entered and then concluded.
And we're concluded. I'm so looking forward to July 1st. I just felt it was important to bring this back and put composure around the entry plan and to state what I have done or have not been able to do. As I started in November, I assured that I spoke with multiple sources to best assess where our district sat. I've continued those initial conversations, and I've grown the pool of resources and continually reach out to other stakeholders for information, facts, advice, advice, and ideas. Because of the history, concerns and improvement areas surfaced for me immediately. And under each concern, and I don't want to have to read through all the bullets, but just as the minds, I listed some of the pathways that I implemented to mediate the solutions. The first was truly around the curriculum piece. Desi has as many changes as Lumsen Public Schools. With a new commissioner, new state testing requirements, and a completely revamped accountability system, curriculum must be safeguarded, and a team has to be developed to manage all the moving parts. The district now has a frame in which services and student needs can be specifically directed. I needed also to be a part of many school, city, PTO booster events and meetings to positively change the perception of our district and celebrate all of our achievements, which leads me to trying to strengthen communication. Communication needed to be continuous, open, and most importantly, timely. All which in delicate situations can be concerning with multiple social media platforms. Whether I sent a weekly email or met with multiple city departments, remained accessible to parents for concerns or needs, communication supported building a bridge in learning community, in our learning community for all levels of stakeholders. And then our budget. The budget, which is now a transparent and grounded document, lends itself to help with identifying all our next steps towards safety and security, transportation, technology downfall, and unanticipated issues. For instance, having to restore an entire school district from a cyber attack, to multiple personnel issues and contracts. Overall, and most importantly, as I took time to reflect about the last seven months, I realized that I have spent a majority of my time in the district on financials and personnel, all which are important, all which are necessary. But my goal is moving forward, which I hope to bring forth in at least in August, discussion and dialogue, is to move forward towards a balanced approach with a greater emphasis on student achievement and promotion of our district. I want to thank you again for affording me this opportunity to serve as your superintendent, and together, I promise we'll be stronger. Thank you. Great, thank you, Lee, Paula. Any other questions regarding the entry plan?
No, we're happy.
Okay. Now, Sue. Yeah, entry plan.
Thanks for putting this together.
No, I just wanted to thank the superintendent for your tireless efforts and transparency and think of the budget, et cetera. And, you know, you're a welcome representative for this district. You know, you go outside here and people walk, and it's amazing.
Thank you. I appreciate the support.
The D-FAC, since you stepped in, has been, oh, she's here, she's in the building. Parents know, the staff knows, the kids know. When you, when the students see you in their buildings, they're extremely proud to have you at their event.
Thank you.
The people know that.
I appreciate it.
I agree.
Dean, do you have something you want to say?
No, I said, thank you for preparing this, and then she did her notes and it all read before we got here.
Yep.
Thank you.
Excellent. And we'll sort of revisit this a little bit when we get to new business, but excellent. Thank you very much. All righty, we're going to go down to the subcommittee report on policy. Wendy, would you like to give us some update?
Yes, so tonight we went over some more of the updating some of our policies. Most of them are just, are going to stay, have we modernized language in a few, things like our emergency fire and evacuation drill. We've added the fact that we can lock down drills into that now. We've updated the bomb threat policy because there are different types of threats, and things aren't necessarily phoned in, so we've included media and texting, digital imaging as part of that, and how those should be reported as well. And I think that was, and then we just cleaned up some of the titles, so that was basically what we did.
So what we will do is all the corrections will be put forth for us to vote on final for August 20th.
For August, yeah, final policies.
Yeah, so we've approved all the changes in our subcommittee.
And I'll present them for approval vote for everybody at the August 20th meeting once Chris has all the corrections and changes that we made tonight. But it was really just cleaning up and modernizing the language.
Thank you. Finance Subcommittee, Mike?
Plans we met this evening, really one main thing to bring up since this came up before on the subject of addition networks, which is our internet service provider. City has approved paying for this year, I believe that's in process. The contract for next year is waiting for me to see.
Okay, great. Excellent. And anything else?
Can we all sign that, Wendy? I thought we all signed this, too. Can we just, can we just go over the budget stuff, just so we're on the same page? Because I thought we were. John, can you just come up for a second? Just, it'll take us five minutes to go over this, just so we're on the same page.
So, I mean, Dean, this is something that we're, wasn't on our agenda, we're not aware of it, I'm not sure.
I thought it was on the, the subcommittee.
We talked about it a little bit in the subcommittee, not sure that...
It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter to me, I'm not sure.
Yeah, John came tonight, and if you want to recess, maybe, we're not taking action or anything, which is all of this, because this is like critical, that we're on the same page on this, literally.
I mean, I guess it would have been appreciated if we had a heads up ahead of time.
I started the agenda for finance, so I figured the recommendation was going to come. I did not know that, that was, you weren't going to make some sort of report. But it was on the subcommittee.
Right, we just began discussion. So, so that everybody else knows, we just simply looked at the difference between what we requested and the budget we requested and the mayor's proposed budget to the city. There's a, there's a difference of, to my calculation, about $736,000 that will have to be dealt with.
And so I think we clear that up pretty quick. But you don't want to do anything?
I mean, I guess, can I make a motion to suspend, suspend the... Suspend the meeting? Yeah. Suspend the rules and, I mean, I think it's important information.
Just so, just so we're on the same page.
So do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor, raise their hand. Opposed? Okay, want to oppose?
Real quick. Let me do this real quick. And just so you understand it, then... And just so you understand it, then, maybe, Mike, this makes fiscal sense to you, and then we can, because we don't have much time. We work on the budget, we've only got two weeks. We're hoping the state would pass their final numbers, because we do expect additional revenue to come.
So I suppose, John, you can come forward at this time? And I guess, you know...
John, do you have one of these?
No.
I mean...
I have.
So is this the, from the mayor's point of view, what you were perceiving the budget to be, opposed to the school committee's point of view?
This is based on the...
And, and of course, this is information that we're all just getting right this minute.
Yeah, no, we don't even have to discussion on it. We just want you to have it and understand it, and then you go from there.
Yeah, I don't think we can discuss this.
No, not necessarily.
We should have it, because last time, we got berated.
No?
My objection on the record is that we got berated because it wasn't something, something was brought up in new and old business, seemingly appropriate, and then we got berated. And now we're being bombarded with this, but the two persons got berated. So my objection on the record is not that this is not important information. I agree with you that it is, but to be blindsided with it, not having had a chance to look at this beforehand, or have sub tried to deal with it, and then have that bring it to us. That's my objection.
Right, because this really is not a forum for the city to... We have no way of sharing this with the public, so we're talking about the feedback we did give them, and that was something we promised we weren't going to do anymore.
Do you want to go through it real quick, John?
Okay, just for informational purposes, the budget, the school budget for fiscal '19 did go up by 1.6 million dollars. It went by 1,629,371. And that's net school spending, eligible only. It didn't just go up... When people made comments on social media, I usually get bombarded. And I think that's what the mayor is partly responding to.
Right, but that doesn't...
Right, but I'm just saying, it is 1.6 million dollars. The increase in school transportation was 110,000. And the increase in school debt service, which is capital outlay, is being increased by 800,000 dollars. So, are there any questions? Because, go ahead.
Well, I mean, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so I guess my first question is, can you just tell me what accounts for the increase in the debt service?
Well, it's the payment of the Johnny, Appleseed, the two projects that you did for energy improvements, for Northwest, I believe, and Johnny Appleseed. It has about 1.6 million dollars. So the plan is to use 800,000 for a couple of years to pay that off. And then transfer that, use those payments to go towards the school athletic complex.
And what number did you use for indirect charges? Or has that not been determined?
It's not determined until the senate and the house come together for a budget. The major changes will be to the school choice accounts, because they update the tuition. So, and until we calculate, you know, how much the salary wages, that various departments have to contact third-party people, they relay the information to me, and it takes time. But the major changes occur in the cherry sheet, and we're required to use cherry sheet estimates for school choice and charter tuition. And it's approximately, I'm hoping, you know, it's about what it has been for the past few years, which is around 6 million dollars.
Because the trend in the cherry sheet for the tuition spend downward.
On one of the categories, every year is different. Sometimes school choice has been going down, but then charter school is going up. So, we'll see.
So, you believe it's in the neighborhood of 6 million?
So, also in here, if you add the indirects plus the direct, which is net school spending, you will be 1.3, 1.3 million over net school spending.
And that's why, that's why I guess you would use 6 million because of the 1.3.
Yes, and so, really, the city and the mayor was only probably required to give the schools of around 350,000 dollars to meet net school spending. But he gave 1,629.
I think everyone here is in agreement that net school spending is a state legal requirement, but not really connected to what it actually costs to run the schools. So, which is why we're having a conversation about these numbers and not net school spending.
But, for years, it has been stated erroneously that the city is just barely meeting net school spending, which has been false right along.
I mean, this is not, this is not a forum to discuss that.
Well, okay, I, I, what I could do, is if you'd like, we could call a special meeting, right? I can call a special meeting by law, and we can have this conversation if everybody's comfortable with that. So, we can bring our finance team in, unless you want to do it like, maybe we could meet finance team with our finance team, and we can sit down and go over this? That's up to you.
I, I met a number of times with the former ward one school committee person, who had became very versed in school finance.
Yeah, so that's how it's like, we'd be willing to sit down and do that. It's just, you know, that way we're on the same page as we move forward. So we're both using the same approach. And if there are differences, you know, voids in that, then we need to correct that.
And I do think that we've done an exemplary job to share between the superintendent, Mike, the finance committee, providing all of the numbers and the documents and being very clear, Glenn, obviously, from the business office, about where every single penny is going and, you know, the cost of doing business at the school system.
I just want to say our finance subcommittee worked extremely hard this year, and there is no fluff in this budget. And they should be commended for the work they put in, and the fact that everything asked for and documented is something that is desperately needed. And we haven't even started talking about dream budgets. This is, this is a bare bones budget as it is. So, thank you all for your...
What we want the public to understand is that, and I think you said two years ago, we barely made net school spending in 2017. We're 1.7 million over net school spending. That's a responsibility, you don't want that to be a responsibility. Our responsibility is to communicate transparently to the public what our numbers are. And then we can all disagree on it, but the reality is, that did come from the website from DESI, that came from a letter from DESI. That's certified. So, we're doing our part as well.
This is not clearly the right forum. I'm not sure why that...
This wasn't something we were prepared for.
As I said, your option is a whole school committee. I could call a special meeting, or if you prefer informally, we can sit down and go through all of this. That's all, that's the only point tonight. I just want to obvert, I'm trying to eliminate what we, everything got out of control last year. And I think you would agree.
Well, I think everything has been very much...
Excuse me?
...by the book.
Everything got out of control last year, we're trying to eliminate that. Because that becomes counterproductive.
Right, but we're...
I think you would agree to that.
Right, but we're not anywhere, I mean, we're in a totally different position this year. And we've been working, I think, very cooperatively, and we've been being very transparent.
I didn't say we're, all I'm saying is, this is the way, I think it's much more productive to, for us, our finance group, to meet with either a finance group or the whole school committee. So we don't end up in that situation, whether, because, let me tell you, there are school systems across the state really hurting. They, I get one call a week from a mayor or a town manager about how to help them solve this, you know, this situation.
Blindsiding the school committee is not a way to set up.
Right, so, Megan, would you be willing to, along with finance subcommittee members?
As I'm saying, I'd like, I have something to say, whichever order.
Okay. So, Nona, and then Mike, and I don't know if anybody with us.
Since we're in this position right now, discussing this, I just would like to say, when can we get a city agreement?
Oh, we have all the numbers. We don't even have...
No, we haven't, we haven't got, we haven't had a city agreement for all the years I've been on the school committee. I can remember Bill Como asking for a city agreement, and we, and we never got one. I'd like to see that at least we get one.
Well, I think the mayor is just waiting for the school committee to propose it.
We can draft one. We can draft one, but I thought it was the responsibility of the city to do that.
Yeah, no, he, you have to come to an agreement.
We'll be glad to draft one.
Right, so.
But, so, I think, I, you know, under open meaning, I think we've been fine providing information. But I think we should probably stop now, because we're starting to venture into...
We're all in. We're all in.
As far as me meeting, finance meeting is finance, or a special meeting, I'm fine either way. I think that that should be a school committee choice and not my personal choice. So I'll do whichever.
I guess I would like to see the finance subcommittee meet initially. And then if there's something that needs to be addressed fuller, then we would hold a regular full-scope subcommittee. Because I think you guys have all the numbers, and you've been working really hard.
Yep, that's fine with us.
And that makes the most sense, if people agree with that. Ron, did you have one last thing?
The only thing, the only thing I'm going to say is that whatever meetings we have, it needs to be understood, Mr. Mayor, are you going to be functioning as a school committee member? And when are you going to be functioning as the mayor?
I think, John, I think we've explained this in the past. The reason the mayor is on the school committee, when they did a charge change, is so the mayor does two functions. He serves on the school committee, but also serves for the city. So that's the person that when the school committee says, listen, our job is school committee, that there's somebody on the other end saying, well, there are these other issues here that we have to be mindful of. So it always is somebody on the school committee, the mayor, whoever that mayor might be, that has a pulse on other things that maybe the school committee isn't maybe aware of. And that was why, that was specifically put in the charter, that the mayor asked to be on the school committee.
What I'm asking for, sir, is that you have to purpose your remarks when you are speaking, like tonight, where you speak.
People, people have filmed me, and I think you've done a lot.
Yeah, nobody told us to film this thing, yeah, you can, you can...
Right, so we did, once again, and I appreciate it, Wendy, for bringing it to our attention. We do allow people to film, but we respectfully request that you notify us at the very beginning and not be doing it without our knowledge.
I want to mention at the beginning of the meeting, and I totally brought it out, because this certainly makes them looking certain.
But you still need to notify us ahead of time, please, because it's not appropriate to do so otherwise. All right, so at this point, we are going to close this portion. We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you, I think this is critical, 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 critical.
But it's just, I think a different forum would have been more appropriate.
Well, I, I read the newspaper this morning, I thought I communicated to the reporter properly, but again, things get mixed up, they only have so much space to write it in, and I didn't want to have this on and off sort of thing.
Right, and I think that we've addressed it from our end as well, because I don't think, you know, it was the committee's intention to have it framed up in the paper.
Just, just to say something positive. We've had a couple of very critical issues that the school department has been dealing with this past year. And I would thank the mayor, the comptroller, for helping us through that ransomware issue. That was true collaboration in a time of crisis, and I just want to express my appreciation of helping us through that.
I think it's very good point, Glenn, and we certainly, I think, you know, want to foster collaborative working environment between the two, so thanks, for sure. So, as we move on to, we need to, yep.
I'll make a motion to move back into regular, regular session?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. At this point, we have the approval of minutes for the June 4th. Wendy, would you like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the June 4th minutes.
I'll second.
Any discussion, omissions, errors? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, she carries. Now we'll move on to action items. Superintendent?
There are none.
Okay, we've already done them. So, new and old business. What I wanted to bring up is, we are supposed to do an evaluation for the superintendent, and I'm proposing that we use her entry plan for this year. And going forth after this year, we'll be using her goals that she'll be setting forth and giving to us as of the next school year. Sue and I are on the evaluation committee. Heather was also, so we need one more volunteer, Isabel. So that'll be great. So what we will do is send out in email form a tool for everyone to use. Please get it back to us in a timely fashion, and then the three of us will compile it and give the superintendent some feedback. So we do appreciate that. So, anything else under, we have the DCP update? No? Anything else? So go ahead. Okay.
The DCP stands for District Capacity Project, which now, this year, has changed its name to LCT, the Lamonster Collaboration Team. It's made up of 10 members on their team, and it consists of administrators, teachers of all grade levels, and school committee members. We meet at least once a month. Our goal is to discuss, provide, and implement new ideas that will enhance teachers' ability to help our students achieve success. We've had success already in last year in implementing a homework policy. When we first joined this, joined this, you know, made this, we created what's called PRN, which stands for Professional Resource Network. We continue to work and improve the PRN model. We have teachers that work within each of the early childhood, elementary, and middle schools. They serve as a resource to other teachers, which would include such items as modeling lessons and lesson plans, researching resources for curriculum, and creating an electronic portfolio of support for the staff. Currently, there's 22 teachers that are participating as PRNs throughout our district. This year, we have formed an inclement weather committee, which has met twice and divided into teams to research DESI requirements, what other districts have implemented, and what area schools' calendars are. Another topic we are considering is researching trimesters versus the quarters we currently have in place. The team is also considering offering a professional development in the coming year in the area of highly effective teaching. Right now, Isabel and I serve on that committee, and speaking for myself, I enjoy working with all, and it's a very collaborative group, and hopefully, we can continue doing that.
Great, thank you very much for the update. One other thing I wanted to mention is on Thursday at 6:15 at the city council meeting, is our opportunity for the school department to present our budget. So we would hope that as many school committee members as possible attend and support the process. Wendy?
I just wanted to point out that on Saturday, it was starburst, and we had the Fallbrook Sunbirds and the choruses and dances of the middle and high schools, jazz bands performed. They were amazing. They were all just wonderful, so that was something I hope you all got to see.
We have so much talent in this city, it's amazing, yeah. Isabel?
On Friday, at Sammaset, on June 15th, we had Hometown Heroes, which Francine Meggs and her whole entire team put together. It was, it was fantastic. All of the police department and fire trucks came up the huge hill, and they had a huge banner and put care packages together that were decorated by...
Ah, hello! And we are having a power outage, just for the fact that Chris is glowing over there.
I know. It's kind of weird.
Generator kicked on. So, why don't we sort of move through this, because we're not sure how much time we have.
Pick up around January.
Just one thing we have. I can't make the first meeting, November 20th, someone's vacation. Can anybody attend changing?
That is the second, it's the third.
It's the third Monday, the month, so that's why.
Okay, I won't be...
Okay, it happened. All right, we also have gotten a draft of our meeting for the school year. Can I have a motion to...
Motion to approve, subject to the fact that they always change.
Exactly, and second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Got to have a framework idea of what we're...
Yeah, and so now, can I have a motion to go into executive section?
Just on the old, uh, old and new business, just a couple of things.
Okay.
I didn't know we sort of do that, but I'd just like to thank AIS. They're a company that purchased the old Tucker Manufacturing Building, and when they came here, Bruce Plasman, who was the CEO and met with their team, asked me sort of some of the needs and places where they could help out, so we could sort of work in parallel with some of the objectives of theirs. And I was very happy to see that the Sentinel Enterprise did a really good story on AIS and their mentoring program, and the employees were thrilled to participate. And they've been a great corporate citizen for the city, and education is at the forefront for them. And also, I got to say, it's got to be hard for the newspapers, both Champion and Sentinel, to please everyone, me included, me first. to please everyone, be included, be first. But, I tell you, they go, it's got to be tough. But every sports event, every school event, they try, not just for us, but the whole area, I know they work hard, there aren't a whole lot of people who do the work, but even Memorial Day, they went to every single Memorial Day event in the whole county, and if the kids did something in schools, they were there. And we sometimes don't start to thank them, we criticize them, first on that list. But, when they do something good, and let me tell you, I noticed the difference this Memorial Day and all the changes that they made in community events, and it's, it should be, we should thank them, because they really have, I think, made a conscious effort to get out there and work hard at it, and it's nice, and so, thank you.
Great, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session, under chapter 39 of the Massachusetts general laws, for the purpose of discussing LEA negotiations and update, and we will not be returning.
Yes, we will be.
We will be returning.
And para, para.
And paras, and discussion of para contract.
We are returning.
We are returning. And this will be a roll call vote?
Yes. Ron?
Yay.
Yay.
Yay. Okay, thank you everyone for joining us. Okay, can I ask, we're going to bring this back, please? We're back in session, and we've just been discussing the para contract, and could I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the para contract pending their ratification of the contract.
Excellent, any discussion, questions?
This is the same one we've already said, okay, they discussed it.
Okay, all those in favor?
And subject to the fact that we're staying tonight, that we have the fiscal ability, the financial ability to.
Yes, it's already in.
Okay, I'm raising my hand.
Motion to adjourn. Okay, second for adjournment? Wendy, all right, we're all set, everybody go forth and be safe out there.